And misuse. What do you mean by that? Your premiums are used to pay plan expenses, which we consider claims. Or we call them claims. Fraud and misuse can result in increased premiums and reduction in benefits. Two, in the worst case, in the worst case fraud and misuse, in the worst case, fraud and misuse can result in an unsustainable plan. That is, the cost of coverage becomes so high that it is no longer feasible option and the plan ceases to exist. So if, if the insurance company cannot sustain it, they go way above, then they can actually cease the plan and say, we no longer covering you guys. And you have to look somewhere else for more alternative plan, which are made more expensive. Managing your healthcare plan. Prevention is better than cure. Be proactive with your physical and mental health. Make healthy food choices. Don't forget to exercise. Don't underestimate the importance of a good night's rest. Walk hard, but don't neglect the social and recreational aspects of life. These help you to de-stress. Utilize your annual checkup. Better to know too early than to know too late. Eligibility and enrollment. Who is eligible for coverage? You as a member of the GECU Med. Two, your spouse by marriage or comal. So in St. Vincent and the Grenadines, a comal relationship is considered a take his own anybody who living together for five days or more. Your children, which is your kids that you produce, whether by you, whether it's a marriage or whatever, whatever it is in marriage or outside of marriage, your children. Your spouse's children, whether they are you or not, legally adopted children. All right? The maximum enrollment age for adults is fifty-nine. So you can join the plan up to the age of fifty-nine. Once you're over that, you cannot go on to the plan. But if you're on the plan and you pass fifty-nine, you'll still be eligible for coverage before that. Okay? Children can remain covered up to age nineteen and from age nineteen to twenty-five, if they are enrolled on a full-time basis in a tertiary level institution, they are covered. So once they go on before the age of eighteen, all right? Nineteen, they will be eligible. But once that nineteen board they reach, they'll be taken off of the plan until they produce the annual letter from the institution to say that they are full-time members of that institution. So now I'll pass over the mic to Mr. Gilbert Porter, who will present the benefits of the plan.
Thank you, Tucker. These things normally are not set for me. Try this one, yes. And I feel so far away from you that I am going to come down a little bit closer. So good, good evening, everybody. When I came in, I said, I know who goes to church and who don't. Because people in church, they come all visit in the back. Anybody who comes straight up to the front, they don't come to church normally. That's, that's... You are a blessed woman. All right. So with, I'm Gilbert Porter and with me is the administrative manager, Miss Sylvia Map, right at the front here, and also this Slovenia Sutherland, who works in the group department. All right? Now, from the, from experience, I'm going to ask two things. One, please note what question you have if a question arises while I'm presenting. Because if I stop to answer questions, we will not leave here. And or you may not get to the end of the presentation. And two, sometimes I struggle with some words. So if I mispronounce a word, don't hold it against me, all right? So let's go. The, your plan, all right, for those persons who are sixty-five or younger, you're covered for one million dollars lifetime coverage. If you're sixty-five over or you're retiree, it is reduced to three hundred thousand. All right? I hate reading slides, but given that I'm talking figures, I guess I have to stick to it. So for transplants, again, seventy-five thousand is the maximum. That's if you're over, let me make sure I get this right. That should have been over sixty-five. You're not sure what it is? Normally, it's the other way around. Where those who are younger than sixty-five would, would have a higher figure, a hundred and fifty thousand. Those over sixty-five would be a lower figure, seventy-five thousand. Any claim related to AIDS or HIV/AIDS related illnesses, maximum, and these are lifetime maximums, eh? Fifty thousand. Psychiatric care, both outpatient and in the hospital, ten thousand maximum. Any congenital disorders, that's your baby, if your baby was born with a congenital issue, for those who are below sixty-five, obviously, two hundred and fifty thousand. All right? I'm not sure about the over-sixty-five ones. But I think I saw on Facebook sometime that a lady who was seventy years old got, got a baby. But we shall go, we see how that goes. I'm a preacher, my profession, so don't get me, don't get me into that, please. All right, so let's, let's continue, because we have a lot to cover. Now, I, I believe that you would have been told that, well, Mr. Josh Sheridan, when he spoke, indicated that there are some changes that have been made to your plan. And we are hitting the first one. Before, your deductible used to be four hundred dollars per family or per individual. It will be increased to five hundred and fifty dollars per year, all right? Now, as usual, the first three persons in the family, once the deductible is satisfied for them, nobody else in that family for that year will have to meet a deductible. All right, so that remains the same. Okay? If, in even that you're not certain what deductible is, is the amount of your medical expense that you have to cover first before you start being reimbursed monies. And let me cover it one time. Please, it doesn't mean that you do not submit your claim. You must submit your claim, because we will not know that you have, yeah, we will not know that you've had medical expenses unless you've submitted a claim. All right, so please submit the claim and the first five hundred and fifty dollars will go to satisfy the deductible. The coinsurance remains the same. We will cover for the first fifty thousand dollars per calendar year, seventy percent, after the deductible is satisfied. And anything over that, we cover a hundred percent of the amount over. All right, so there's no change to that one. As usual, your policy, your, your health, your group health policy covers you both locally and also outside of St. Vincent. However, if you have to go outside of St. Vincent for medical treatment, there are certain things that you must do before you leave St. Vincent. All right? And that's why you see the word pre-certified there. Pre-cert, it's somewhere later on in, in the presentation, but might as well recover it now. That's normally one of the headache areas. You go to your doctor, the doctor suspects or states that you have an issue that cannot be dealt with in St. Vincent. The doctor would give you a letter of referral to a hospital or doctor overseas. You are to inform GECU. You are to inform GECU that you have, your doctor wants you to go overseas for treatment. GECU, through the brokers or directly, will inform us, SAGCO. We will decide whether or not we need a second opinion. All right? And if we need a second opinion, it has to be from a specialist in the area. All right? Once you get that second op, we get that second opinion and everything is good, the overseas section of your, of your plan kicks in. We will cover your AFA, not business class, not first class, economy class. All right? We will, and the overseas part of the, which you'll see later on, kicks in. I must say the overseas part is a lot higher than the local. All right? So for the pre-certified trips overseas, and if you choose, chose to go to one of our managed care network, we have a group of providers that is on our network. If you choose to go to them, we will cover for the first fifty thousand dollars eighty percent of your expense and anything over that a hundred percent. If it's outside of our managed care network, we will cover seventy-five percent of the first two hundred thousand dollars. And then anything over that, we'll cover a hundred percent of it. Managed, I, yeah, so I said the managed care network is a group of providers that we have outside of St. Vincent. Yes. The list usually is available, it's available online. On your card, there should be a link there or, or address there you can actually use to go there. All right? Huh? Sorry? Yeah, I did say that, yes. All right. If you choose to go overseas without going through the proper channels, your claim will be treated like if you were still in St. Vincent. All right? So the overseas section would not kick in, nor will we pay your AFA. All right? If you are overseas and an emergency arises, then your plan would cover you. But note, it's an emergency, but we'll get into that a little later on. Now, in terms of the deductible, suppose you, God was being so good to you, no sickness all year, and then within the last three months of the year, something happened, you went to the doctor. Remember what I say, what the first thing would happen? Deductible. So you went to the doctor, it costs you five hundred dollars. And all of that is eligible, by the way, eligible expenses, five hundred dollars. All of that gone to satisfy deductible for twenty-twenty-four. Come, nothing else happened, come January twenty-twenty-five, that five hundred dollars that we took as a deductible goes over to twenty-twenty-five. So for twenty-twenty-five, you have already satisfied five hundred dollars of deductible for that year, even though it took place within the last three months of the previous year. All right? Okay. So that's what the carryover provision is about. Forty percent? Okay. Not as is, okay. Sorry, I stand corrected, we pay forty percent. All right, of, if that's without approval. For those persons who come onto the plan, so you're new to the plan, and if there is a pre-existing condition, within the first year, the maximum we pay for that condition is a thousand dollars. Once that year is passed, then you'll be treated for that condition, normal like everybody else. Okay? That's what the pre-existing condition is about. And I did mention to you that the local and the overseas look quite different. For example, daily room and board, that's what the hospital charges you just for being there every day. On the local section, four hundred dollars is a maximum per day. Whereas if it's overseas and you have been approved, it increases to two thousand dollars. So you see how there's quite a big disparity between that, right? If you go to a hospital that charges, in St. Vincent, that charges more than four hundred dollars, the rest of it is your responsibility. Okay? Intensive care, it's two and a half percent times the average semi-private room rate. Okay, so two and a half percent, sorry, two and a half times, not percent, two and a half times the average semi-private room rate. So it, it would pay more than the four hundred dollars if you have to be in intensive care and it's charged more. Private nursing, not for custodial purposes, so that means that for those persons who require a nurse all the time, just to exist, that's not what that is all about. You went to the, you went to the doctor, hospital, whatever, and for a period of time you need to have private nursing. Your plan has some coverage, maximum eight-hour shift within a private residence, forty dollars per day. Within, during the night, it increases to sixty dollars. In, if it's in the hospital as well, and in the hospital, it would be only be in the night, it would be eighty dollars for the night and twenty days maximum per calendar year. A breakdown of the psychiatric area. We, for outpatient care, will do fifty percent of, of the cost, but remember, there's a maximum of sixty dollars per treatment and maximum visits per day is one. All right? Within a year, we would not pay over two thousand dollars for psychiatric services under your plan. If you're confined to the hospital, then seventy percent of it is, is covered. Physiotherapy, seventy percent, where the same, the same coinsurance, seventy percent, but to a maximum of seventy-five dollars, all right? And again, maximum visits per day will be one. At that note, I would also say, because I'm thinking of some of the problem areas. Whether it's a physiotherapist or whichever medical, medical provider or health provider, they must be registered. They must be registered, all right? We do have some physiotherapists here who are not registered. If you go to one of those, you will not be refunded, no matter how good they are. And I hear some of them are very good. All right? But if you go to one of their, one of those and they're not registered in the Ministry of Health or whoever is registering an authority, you will not be refunded for that visit. Okay? So encourage them to register if they're not registered, if you want to go to them. All of them, every medical or health service provider must be registered. All right? Doctor visits, the office, the home, the hospital, all of them, maximum sixty dollars per visit. Of course, subject to deductible and coinsurance. If it's a specialist visit and for specialist visits, you have to have been referred by the general practitioner or your, your doctor, as we just called him. You have to have been referred, yes? Okay, so give them a mic there.
Okay, so for the specialists, outside of referrals, we consider pediatric, I'm sorry, pediatricians as well as gynecologists. So those necessarily don't need a referral. But everybody else, being dermatologists, cardiologists, anything else for us to consider at specialist rate, then we will need a referral.
All right, thank you, Liv. Might as well keep the mic. All right, so emergency doctor visits at, by the home hospital, then it goes to a hundred. And then we have other stuff, local ground ambulance, which are the ambulance service in for your hospital, don't really charge, but I think they have a private one now. The seventy percent, that R and C means reasonable and customary charges. All right? The maximum, as you see there for the ground ambulance, is three hundred dollars per year. Surgical expense, other hospital services, all the miscellaneous expenses, the diagnostic expenses, if you have to have prosthesis, radiotherapy or chemotherapy, all of those go under the coinsurance, seventy percent of what is reasonable and customary after deductible has been satisfied. All right? If the, the person needs hearing aid, we also do seventy percent of reasonable and customary, but the maximum per five-year period is fifteen hundred dollars. All right, a hearing aid is not something that you change every other month. With, your plan do have a medical, medical necessary ferry transportation benefit, seventy percent, again, two trips maximum per calendar year. That's for those persons from the Grenadines mainly. All right? And three hundred dollars maximum per year. I talked about the medical air transportation already, that's the AFA. As you notice, the coinsurance also applies and maximum three thousand dollars per year. Now, note, please, that is also a maximum of two trips per year as well. Your medical air transport benefit, if they have to repatriate, the person died overseas, then there's also, we cover seventy percent of the reasonable and customary charge to bring that body back to St. Vincent. Okay? But maximum is five thousand dollars. Prescription drugs, not everything the doctor prescribes are actually prescription strength. All right? So the drugs that the, the pharmacists have to dispense, those are usually the prescription drug, this prescription strength drugs. But if the doctor say you need paracetamol, that's not a prescription strength drug. That's something you can just go and purchase off the shelf. Okay?
What about the herbal medicines?
Well, I don't know if they have herbal medicine that is prescription strength, but or if you can just go and buy them. I really, I'm not, I'm not familiar with herbal medicine. All right? But your plan more than likely would not cover herbal medicine. For the ladies? For the ladies? For the ladies? Last time I checked, men can have a baby. So whether or not it is you, the member, female member, or your spouse, for the male members, who are part of the plan, normal delivery, maximum fifteen hundred dollars. All right? That word prenatal are the expenses that you've incurred before the delivery of the child. Now, our prenatal amount maximum is one thousand dollars. If your expenses go over that before the deliver, the delivery of the child, please keep your receipts, because once the child is delivered, you can then submit all of the other bills. Okay? Cicerian, if it's, if it's, if the birth was through cicerian section, then it increases to twenty-five hundred. Or if in the unfortunate instance where you had a miss, there was a miscarriage, then the prenatal amount of one thousand would be the cap as well. Please note, though, that if complications arise, then the major medical part of the plan, like the surgical expenses and so on, will kick in. Okay, so you're not just confined to those maximums there, once there are complications and the doctors have to do surgery and whatever else. Okay? And the fun part, preventative. Right? Because my grandmother told me prevention is better than cure. So every member who is on this plan have a maximum of six hundred dollars, which attracts no deductible whatsoever to do preventative care. All right? And we'll get into a little bit more of that, you know, probably next slide, I think. Your spouse, one hundred dollars less, five hundred dollars maximum. Okay? And if you're on, you're under, under the age of five child for immunization purposes, if you choose to go privately to get the child immunized, then there's also that of a hundred dollars. All right? Now here we go. The annual physical examination of our benefit, let me read from here. Includes blood pressure checks, respiratory checks, complete urinalysis. Blood profile include the fasting blood sugar tests, total cholesterol, hemoglobin, estimated sedimentation rate test. Electrocardiogram for males and females who are forty and older. The annual gyno and pap smear for female members or the spouse of a male member. The annual pathology or prostate exams, which most men are afraid of, for those who are over forty and older. The annual glaucoma tests for members only, so that doesn't cover your spouse, unfortunately. And the annual lipid profile for members and spouses. So those are what constitutes the makeup of the various tests for the preventative. Now you might go to the doctor and the doctor might recommend other tests. Those other tests would not be covered under the preventative section. They're very good for you and should do them. Right? But they'll go under the major medical part, which will attract deductible if it's not satisfied as yet and coinsurance once it's payable. And the diagnosis. See, doctor can't just send you for the test just for sending you sick. That's for the other parts. You don't need a diagnosis for the preventative. Wait, wait until, yeah, trust me, I don't want to get into questions now. Be patient, write it down, right? Then, we almost finished, don't worry. Dental and vision. Anything you see in red means that there's a change, by the way. I should have said that. So the, the maximum is still a thousand dollars for your dental. The deductible has increased from one hundred to one fifty. All right? And for those new persons on the plan, there's a waiting period of three months before you can become eligible to claim under this, the dental part benefit. All right? Preventative work now attracts a coinsurance of eighty percent. So we cover eighty percent of it, you will cover twenty percent. All right? Yes. So the black is what used to be, the red is what is changed to. All right? Basic restorative work, like, like fillings and so on. Seventy-five percent used to be, it's now reduced to seventy percent. The major restorative remain the same. For the orthodontia, again, that only covers your children who are under age nineteen. Maximum per calendar year is two thousand dollars. Deductible is a hundred dollars. And we pay fifty percent of the benefit, but not exceeding two thousand, of course. And there's a six-month waiting period, and that's for the new persons. Right? Six months before you, before you can claim. So this is not for the adult who have to or decides to do braces. It's for your children who are under nineteen. And then we have a host of stuff there that I have no intention of reading. that I have no intention of reading, um, with your dental work. All right? And their maximums. I'm sure this information is made available. Yes?
Yes, it's made available under the schedule of benefits.
On the schedule of benefits, wonderful. Anybody think I should read them? Okay. You're so very nice. All right. Under the vision, the benefit is still nine hundred. All right? But the change again is deductible from one hundred to one fifty, and the coinsurance from seventy-five to seventy percent. Okay? The waiting period is still the same, six months. All right? And this benefit, it provides for reimbursement, reimbursement of expenses incurred by necessary vision care treatment and supplies which are recommended by duly qualified optician and all the other people who play around with our eyes. All right? Um, I was never blind until I got glasses and then, you know how it go. Amen. All right. Let's talk about how the plan performed so far. So membership between December first, twenty-twenty-two, and November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, there are eight hundred and sixty-one members and three hundred and ninety-three dependents. All right? In terms of the billing that was incurred, uh, from the first of December twenty-one to November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, I believe that's what's there. Yes. So eighty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifteen cents. And that's for, this is for the life, group life, for the group life section. Eighty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifteen cents, and eighty thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and forty-four cents. There has been no claims incurred for that time, and therefore the loss ratio is zero percent. For the group health, same period, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and ninety cents was collected by us for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two period, and we paid out six hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-four cents, representing a loss ratio of sixty-eight percent. For the period, January twenty-three to December, end of the, thirty-first of December, twenty-twenty-three, we collected nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and thirty cents, and we paid out seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-three cents, in claims, by the way, that's what we paid out, uh, representing a loss ratio of eighty-four percent. Now the, you want the bottom is a breakdown. So under the medical section, we collected six hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight, one, eight point seven zero, paid out four, eight, eight, one, one, seven point one six, representing a loss ratio of seventy percent. For the dental, we collected a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight, fifty-one. We paid out a hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and one dollars and eighty-eight cents, representing a loss ratio of a hundred and seven percent. And for the dent, vision, we collected a hundred and three thousand, eight, sixty point six zero, and we paid out a hundred and forty-six thousand, one, forty-one, forty-nine, representing a loss ratio of a hundred and forty-one percent. So for the dental and the vision, we paid out more than what was collected. All right? But that represents, when you put everything together, the loss ratio is eighty-four percent. All right, so I just said all those, so we could go past that. All right. So these are the recommendations, which would have touched along the way. But we didn't touch this first one. The rates will increase, and I'll give you the increases just now. The deductible on the health was increased from four hundred to five fifty. On the dental, it was increased from one hundred to one fifty. The dental coinsurance, the level one, which is the preventative and so, uh, was reduced from a hundred percent to eighty percent. And the level two, from, which is the minor restorative, uh, seventy-five percent was reduced to seventy percent. On the vision, the deductible has increased to one fifty from a hundred, and the coinsurance reduced from seventy-five to seventy percent. I saw some people writing, so I was just giving them a little time. So, these are the existing rates. Currently, for those members who are under sixty-five, for the single, seventy-seven dollars and eighty-five cents a month, in total, for the couple, one thirty-two eighty, couple includes parent and child. All right? And family, two hundred and one dollar, two hundred and one dollar and forty-five cents. Those are the, those are the current, or the previous, I should say, the previous rates. For active members over sixty-five, seventy-two, thirty-five per month. Single, one twenty-seven thirty, couple, one ninety-five ninety-five. Family. And for retirees who are over sixty-nine, excuse me? Single, sixty-eight sixty-five, couple, one twenty-three sixty, and family, one ninety-two twenty-five. And here's the fun part, the new rates. Single would now be eighty-seven dollars and eighty cents. That's for under sixty-five. Couple, one fifty and sixty-five cents, a hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-five cents. And family would increase to two twenty-nine thirty per month. Active members who are over sixty-five, single, eighty-two thirty, couple, one forty-five fifteen, family, two twenty-three eighty. And retirees over sixty-nine, single, seventy-eight sixty, couple, one forty-one forty-five, and family, two twenty-ten. Those are the new rates. I don't know if you want me to break them down between vision, um, dental and all of that. Right? All right. Well, as, as you may be aware, this, your, your plan covers you pretty much anywhere you go in the world. There are some, everybody would have received a card, on the back of your card, as, everybody should have received the card. So if you haven't received your card yet, check the insurance brokers. And there was, the cards don't work. Okay. All right. But everybody showed that they don't work, wouldn't solve anything. All right? So if you, if you have a difficulty with your card, please contact Geku or the insurance brokers, so that your issue can be dealt with. All right? Yep. We went through overseas care already, so I'm not going to go through that again. I should stay here. Emergencies. I did say that if you're overseas and you had an emergency, that your plan would cover you. An emergency under your plan means, if you're talking while I'm talking, you wouldn't hear anything, you know? And you prevent the other person you're talking to from hearing too. Right? Emergencies mean any situation that is threatening to life and limb. It means that those services require to provide an immediate diagnosis in order to alleviate pain or treat unforeseen medical conditions that arise unexpectedly, and which, if left untreated, could lead to disability or death. You're overseas, you had an emergency, it is expected that you would have gone to the emergency unit of the hospital. All right? That you would have gone to the ER, as, as we call them. Okay? Um. You should call that the relevant number on the card. They are manned twenty-four hours a day, and someone will assist you. All right? So the card is more than just for swiping. All right? You walk, please, walk with your card when you're traveling. Toll-free, yes. It's toll-free. All the numbers on the back of the card are toll-free. As well. All right, so our global, access to our global providers, again, you can go online, and all the information will be there for you. Claims. We commit to responding within ten working days. All right? Uh, you are required to submit a claim within ninety days of the thing occurring. Three months. Okay? Um. Might as well do this now. What we have been noticing is that we've received quite a lot of claims with missing information, with, that are not completed and so on, and all of that gives you stress and gives us stress. All right? So. Here how it, this thing will nicely play out. One, please you make sure, when you start, when you do your claim, that the doctor or whoever completes that claim properly, the doctor have signed and stamped, they stamp on it. All right? And that it is properly dated.
Including the diagnosis.
Including diagnosis, yes. You have to complete the, the other side of the form and sign and date. Submit that form to, it comes to Geku, I believe. Geku has a responsibility to verify that everything is in order. Oh, and your receipts. And not the print receipt that comes out of the cash machine, that just says item one, ten dollars, item three, four dollars, and so on. That the pharmacist writes a receipt with whatever the drug is and the relevant cost. Per drug. All right? Get those on, sign up everything nicely, submit them, Geku has to check to ensure that it is done good, and then it's sent to us. We have to check it as well. All right? And then, it is then sent to those persons who adjudicate the claims. If all of that flows smoothly, we would have less stress. Okay? So let's try and get that done. Yes? Oh, brother, you need a mic.
Wanting to note, when, when Gilbert said that you, ninety days, it is the very first visit in ninety days start from. So it doesn't mean if you go to the doctor, January fourth, and you have the last visit, thirtieth of March, that is gonna start on the thirtieth of March, it starts on the very first of January, counting on to be the ninety days, okay? So it, we've realized that a lot of people keep claims backing up because they have multiple, uh, procedures, and that in itself cause your ca, your claim to be delayed, because, uh, when it comes late like that, we don't have the force to send it to surgical, who would might deny it because the ninety days method of pass. So from the very first visit, consider the ninety days start. Okay?
All right, thanks, Tucker. Well, I did hear some people, quite a few persons noted that their card's not working. All right? But they're supposed to work. Okay? And if, if it's working, it really also speeds things up like one hundred percent. All right? Because your claim is settled immediately, and you know exactly how much you need to pay the provider, and we pay the balance to them. All right? So we're gonna get, we're gonna get that sorted out. Well, most persons are familiar with the cards, so I should just, no? All right. So each person on the plan have, must have a card for themselves. You can share cards. I know the Bible said to become one, but in this insurance plan, the two not one. All right? Dividing the family. Um, so each person is, that's why each person is issued a card. All right? The children get cards as well, right? For this plan? Right? No. The card is, we would have changed all the cards to this one. You don't have this one? Somebody have it. So if you didn't get one of these, you need to check with Geku. If you did not get one of these, you need to check with Geku.
Correct. Check with Geku.
All right?
And we'll get it sorted out for you.
Because we, we changed all the cards, so that might be why some of the cards not working too. All right, so normally what happens is that you give the doctors worker most of the time. The card, they swipe it, and in a couple of seconds, they can tell you, this is how much you have to pay. All right? And it's done. All right? You don't have to do no claim form, you have to sign no claim form, you have to sign the person thing, yes. We don't have to sign a claim form and all of that. Done. Once the doctor has the machine. Once they have the machine.
Okay, so Gilbert, just, just an additional note.
Yes.
In the event that, um, the provider doesn't have the card, uh, it doesn't mean that you can't claim. It, you can still carry a paper form.
Use the claim form, yes.
Go through the process of, and submit that to Geku, and it will be handled from there.
Yes.
If, even if the card doesn't work as well, you still have the facility to do that. It doesn't mean that your claim won't be paid.
Yeah. So. The doctors don't automatically, automatically get the machines. There's a process, they actually, they actually have to apply. Right? And there's a process that takes place. Some of them may not have all the things they need in order to have the machines, and so on. All right? But we, we are trying, we've been trying to expand the list of persons who have these machines. Okay? Um, I think this is the current list. Again, you can get this information as well. Well, the doctor wouldn't be dealing with the lab part. Yeah. But the lab have. The lab has, the, which one the lab have it there? Right now only Sigma. Well, Imogen have it. And Health Solutions have it as well. So there are three labs so far have it there. All right? Okay. Well, I didn't, I did stress on, sorry. I did stress on the fact that. Yes, Unicorns quotes. What's that? Yeah, Unicorns, eh, this is quotes. There I.
Section.
And the, oh, yes. Okay, what's that? Oh, sun, sun is there? Oh, okay. So yeah, Sean is there as well. You have plenty people there, man. All right. Wonderful. Okay. So I, I said I would have stressed this already, that all providers must be licensed, they must be duly registered. Okay? Um, for your eyes, you are allowed, and I, and I, well, not allowed. We will reimburse for one example year, and your lens can be changed yearly as well. All right? Your frames, however, every two years. Okay? So for the eyes, exam and lens yearly. Frame biannually. So every two years. Go ahead, yes.
And to further clarify that, it is from the service date. So it's not just January first, you can go. So it's not just January fourth, you can go and get glasses. So if you got glasses, January this year, you cannot go until January next year. If you go March this year, just know that you have to wait twelve months for eye examination as well as lens. And for frames, it's every twenty-four months. So you have to make sure, keep track of the last time you would have gotten, right?
And I, I got caught at that. I was one week too early. Yes. And, and Levanya got to give me the good news. Okay. For your cleaning, in terms of dental work, your cleaning, your scaling and cleaning is once every six months, okay? I have never met the person who love to go to dentist so much that they need to be there cleaning more than once every six months, alright? If, if you are such person, please see me afterwards, I need some help from you because I, I don't like going there. Alright, frequently asked questions? Deductible, deductible is not like what Levanya said. Deductible is calendar year, January fourth to December thirty-first, okay? Yeah, we talked about that already, could go past that. I already say you can't use one another cards. Your children can't, can't use your card, nor can your spouse use your card, nor can you use their card either. If you lose the card, it would cost you fifty dollars to replace it. So you get the first one for free. If you lose it, you pay for it. If it is stolen, you pay for it as well. We are, we have a really neat benefit where we can actually place the funds in your bank account. Alright, if you want that facility, you do have to complete. And in fact, now the enrollment forms usually have that on it, alright? Yeah, so if you want a facility, instead of you having to go pick up a cheque and then go line up in the bank to change the cheque or deposit the cheque or whatever, you, we can actually credit your account directly. You would need to have a email address though, because what we do, when the claim is settled, we send you an email with the explanation of benefits. And then, when we hit your account, we send you an email to say that your account have been credited with the amount. Alright, so I like that because I don't like to go and stand up in lines. That's why I hardly come in Geku, anyway. Mister Chairman, sir, could we do some online stuff? Very good, yes, you know? Thank you. I like a bit more Nazi. I would like to pay my Geku stuff from straight online from my bank. Yes, I'm happy to hear that. Alright, yes, I'm a Geku member too, long, long time. Okay. Repeat medication. Suppose whatever it is that you would have gone to requires you to go back to the pharmacy without going back to the doctor. Levanya, you, you explain that one for them, please.
Okay, so this is how we claim for repeat medication. You would not be required to have your doctor fill the form again. So all you have to do, completely top of the form where it has your personal information, your name and so on, sign and date, and I emphasize on dating because most times people just sign and not date. And you just place in the bottom half of the form, repeat medication. Once you have claimed for it before, it would be in your history. And once this is something that you have to have ongoing medication, so on, like diabetes, hypertension, prostate, cancer and so on, then we, well, it's expected for you to have this continuous medication having to claim, right? So all you have to do is just fill the top part of the form with your personal information. You place in the bottom of it, attach your receipts and it's your, it will be a written receipt with your name on it as well as the medication you received. And you place repeat medication on the doctor's section and you submit it to Geku.
Alright, with the receipt, yes. Alright. Well, the reason I skipped over how do I access medical care overseas, I think I went through that already. Anybody, so I'm giving you an opportunity to ask a question here. Anybody have any question about overseas? I go with this boy. Oh, yes.
I didn't see anything mentioned about air ambulance.
On the, did I miss it?
Or maybe I miss it.
Alright, somebody will check for me. So while they're checking, yeah, I did that already. Okay, for those of you whose children have reached the age nineteen, if they are not in full-time tertiary education, full-time, not Uwi open campus, full-time. Well, it's not open campus anymore, can't remember what it's called now. Global, right, good, good. If they are not, then they will be removed as a dependent from your plan. If they are in full-time tertiary education institution, you are required to provide proof from the university, alright? So you have to provide proof of enrollment, a document, a letter or form, whatever, from the university which shows that your, your child is a full-time student at that university. For, and this has to be done for each year, alright? And I have personal experiences with that. Till I used to get fed up with them. The point is, no, it has to be done for each year. And I look very young, but I have adult children, even. Removed off the plan. How long is the gap? One year gap.
And get a letter with the, the place back on the plan?
One year.
A year, no, it's up to six months.
Alright, so you only allow six months gap.
Okay, another question following that. So if you have a policy with one child as a dependent, the child is, has gotten to the age removed, would the premium be adjusted to reflect?
Yes, yes, you become an individual.
Or?
Or if, if it was two children and a, and a parent and one is gone, you become a couple. So your, your premium is adjusted accordingly, is the answer to that question. Somebody has had a, the hand up before, somebody has answered something to Daphne?
I think, I think she asked the same question I was gonna ask. Because when my daughter became nineteen, she was removed from, as a couple and then she went individual, but then she went to Uwi, but I can't remember how much months it was.
Between the time?
Yeah.
Okay.
So she's now individual, so that doesn't apply?
No.
She can't come, she can't come back over?
No. Well, from what she just said, more than six months is gone. She, she's there as an individual, she said, yeah.
I also like to, some clarity from Sargico. Can the, when the dependent reach age nineteen, can they automatically get their own plan as auto coverage right away?
So, yes, your dependent child can have their own personal insurance at the age of nineteen. What we do, once we get notification from Geku, it is in the form of a change form where you are taking off your dependent and you're stating in the other section of this form that my daughter or my son has now attained the age of nineteen and wish to be transferred to their own personal insurance. Then you would have an enrollment form done for your child and they will be basically set up without having to do any sort of medical underwriting and so on. But it has to be a seamless, it has to be a seamless, so thirty-one days. So if your dependent comes off the end of February, the child has to have their own insurance the first of March.
If the dependents does not get a member of Geku, join them. And in fact, I, I don't think there's any Geku adult who don't have the child as a, as a member of Geku. I don't think so. No, man. Are them scholarships and so on? No.
Question?
You see, this is why I didn't allow questions before.
There's also a facility, there's also the facility where you can, there's also the case where you can be a member of Geku and within the thirty-one days after joining and being a member, you also go on automatically without any underwriting procedure. So if, for example, you join the first of March, you have until, yes, you have until the end of March to go on to the plan without any underwriting procedure as well.
Okay, so while we're talking about that, let me also just clarify something else. For the member who gave birth to a child, you have thirty-one days after the birth of the child to get the child on without us asking anything about their health. And we cannot refuse to cover them. Thirty-one days. So you have to make up your mind with the name of the child and all that so you could get the birth certificate, alright? You could get the birth certificate. Yeah, I know how, especially ladies, it's take long to make up their mind. Just go shopping with them, you will find out, yes. And also for those of you who get married, you have thirty-one days for your spouse to come under your plan without any questions asked, alright? So remember thirty-one days for everything. If you want stress, wait until after thirty-one days. Alright, so those of you who love stress, just wait until after thirty-one days and then apply.
I beg to interject right here, Mister Porter.
Yes, please.
There are persons online who would like to ask questions, so
Yes, please.
The moderator will facilitate that.
Alright.
Few questions from online. So premiums increased, why would deductible also increase?
Alright, why premiums and deductible? Now, if you noticed, well, first of all, unlike what John Public thinks, insurance companies don't have an inexhaustible amount of money, alright? Insurance, this is how insurance operates. It's all of us pull monies together. Most of us are very fortunate, we don't get sick. And we help out the unfortunate few who get sick, alright? Now, you, I don't know if the, the person would have seen what the claims experience was like. But if that continues, what would happen is that your plan will eventually be closed because it becomes unsustainable, alright? So the reason for deductibles increasing and the premiums increasing is to ensure that your plan remains sustainable, alright?
Okay, next question.
Health insurance was not really designed for the little doctor visit and so on. That was not really the intention behind it. It really for, is for when things happen that we can't afford to pull monies out of our pocket. That's what is, that's when you really see the value of it, alright? And that's what it's really for. So deductible is what they do, is they keep down the expense for small claims so that when the large one happen, there'll be enough money. Alright, so that's, that's the long answer to the short question.
Okay. Question from online, is the card now working?
Let me see, I, I'm hearing there's a slide. No, there's no slide. So is the card now working?
Okay, so the reason your card might not work, one, the strip could be damaged, two, there could be internet issue. And thirdly, if there is an arrase on a plan, it's like a debit card. So if you swipe, it would not pay. So if the plan is not up to date, we give a thirty-one day grace period. So if premium for, where we in now, February, if February did not pay in full, you cannot swipe your card. So even, so what we encourage members, I don't, from what I've noticed, and I guess it's, I can speak clearly, what I've noticed, everybody do not have where their deduction come from their account. It seems as though payments come from different, I, I, I still do not understand it, but payments do not come out from your everyone account. So you will see the regular payment come for some every month and there is a list with some persons who seem to be a little delinquent. So those are the persons who affecting the plan as it relates to the swiping of the card.
Alright, so, let me, let me just, let me just clarify that so you don't understand fully. So she's not saying that you didn't pay, alright? She's saying that if one person who is in Geku Med did not pay, it affects all of you. Because it's one policy, it's one, it is one policy that covers Geku members. Alright, so that's like, just like a while ago when we had the little cross talk, cross talk and I have no clue what you're saying, I can't help you, right? Yes, this lady have all my hand up.
So maybe Geku need to let everybody go on a deductible plan.
Well, we will be, we will love that, then you have no problem with the swiping unless this internet or the, or the strip is damaged. Alright, but I, I believe that might be the main problem, okay? Anybody else had a question?
Okay, Gilbert, let me, let me just address
Yes.
a component of that. While we have recognized what Miss Map has said, we are working with Geku and also with your team to ensure that these problems do not exist. So they've, we have devised a plan.
Okay.
And we're working on that with Geku's management to ensure that these issues that you encounter concerning payment do not occur anymore in the future. So
Excellent.
we are in, while we have encountered that, we have recognized where the issue lies as Miss Map would have mentioned, and we have devised a plan to make it work moving forward, that it does not affect the general membership.
Okay, wonderful.
So, please bear with us.
So we should have some resolution soon.
Yes, correct.
Wonderful, I'm, I'm happy to hear that. Alright.
Question from online.
Could we, could we do one in here for us and then go back online? Yes. You could, I mean, I have Covid.
That's alright, thank you very much. We have talked about the increases in the premium, but no one has stated, unless I have missed it, how long these are intended to last. In other words, the question which rarely goes here for us, are we likely to see additional increases in the, on the writing of the claims? And while I'm on the floor, let me just throw this. What we were seeing there in the case of the, the family claim for persons under sixty-five, it works out to thirteen point seven five percent thereabout, okay? Is that really similar to what would be a regional sort of claim? Geku is doing things across the region, that's why I'm asking that question, okay? And then, now it says, what came out in, in the post said seventy plus, but you have corrected that to sixty-nine plus. What's the top age limit? It just says plus.
It goes until
Okay, thanks much. And then there are the two, thanks.
So I'm not, don't go so fast here because I'm not sure I followed the second question with the regional thing. I'm not sure I followed the question with the regional.
Haven't worked regionally and had insurance where I worked. where I worked and here after the pandemic, I simply said no, and I did not go through the hassle of, um, moving things back and forth. When I was where I was, I did claims there and left those there. And when I was in St. Vincent, I left my claims in St. Vincent. The hassle post-pandemic was too much. Okay? But however, because Sajiko was also providing services regionally, which I benefited from, that's why I'm asking the question. As to whether those increases that we are seeing now that I am in back in St. Vincent are similar to the kind of increases we would see, um.
Across the board, okay, I get you, I get you now. All right, so each, the, the thing about group, group insurance is that you can customize stuff. Right? Each plan is looked at individually. Right? So in your case, the Geku plan was looked at very much including the claims experience. And the trigger is really the claims experience. That's the trigger for the increases. Right? In the same breath, if a period of time pass and the claims experience is much better, you, you can have the opposite happening where premiums go down, um, deductibles go down, coinsurance go up, that kind of thing. So we don't only do the increases, we also actually reduces for those who do, whose claims experience are not, not as those, at those levels as well. Okay? So it's not a across-the-board thing, each plan is looked at individually. Yep.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Question from online. Would the live stream be available for viewing afterwards?
Well, I, I can't answer that one. Um, that might be a Geku, Geku question. Anybody from Geku? Donnelly?
I was seeing with a nod from this acting CEO that we can facilitate that through IT effects. Yes.
All right, so that sounds like a resounding yes. Once it's possible. All right, wonderful. You have more?
Yes, please. Is the only medical emergency, is it only medical emergencies you can cover overseas? What about dental and vision emergencies?
Well, once it's an emergency, right? But obviously the limits will apply. And I don't know if you're, if the person is aware of what it costs to do dental work overseas. But it's, it's not pretty.
There's a follow-up question. What is the thought behind covering spouse for glaucoma, not covering spouse for glaucoma testing?
Anything can happen in terms of coverage on a group plan. But anything you add increases the cost. Right? So if you think that that is a very, very important thing for Geku's members to have, you speak, well, Geku would speak to the brokers and the brokers would make the submissions to us, we will price it and let you know what the cost will be. All right? So when it comes to your group health insurance, you can ask for almost anything as long as you're willing to pay for it. All right?
This is just a follow-up to the question that was asked before that, that one. If a member, a Geku Med member resides overseas, um, can that person continue on the plan and, um, claim accordingly? Because we may have situation where person is on the plan and then they have to walk overseas or some other reason why they have to reside overseas.
No, a child is different. I would, well, sometimes what we don't know don't hurt us, and I don't even want to know what Ms. Johnny just said because normally the plan only catered for you to be overseas for six months as an adult. If somebody is resigning overseas, they should not be on the plan. But what we don't know, we would not, you know, turn a blind eye. But for instance, if for instance, okay, you're living overseas and you submit a claim from overseas, we are going to ask you, because when the claim come in, we are going to ask the reason for your visit overseas. If you say vacation, we accept that, okay? But if we see it continuing, we're gonna cease. You know, they're gonna figure, well, this person living there. And chances are, you're gonna be taken off the plan because it should only be out for six months. That's how it is.
The children are studying overseas, they come home on vacation like twice per year, so what do we do?
Children different, if you're, she's an adult on the adult plan.
Yes, she's not on my, she's not on my, on my thing, so then what?
What I don't know don't hurt, but, um, I'm just saying that in a sense where.
By paying in vain.
If I, we will deal with certain situation on a case-on-case basis, but really and truly, six months is the period, okay?
All right, so the gist of that is generally, if somebody is living overseas, as in that's where they reside, they should not be on the plan. If your child has gone to study, I believe usually that's treated a bit different because it's not considered that the person is residing. Right? Um, but it's good, it's best if that's, if that is going to happen, that you have a conversation. Right, before, okay? Have a conversation before with the relevant authorities so that you could get everything sorted out. All right? Okay, so no more online questions, any, let me see what else is inside here that we need to cover. Went past all that already. Somebody pass the mic to the person who have a question there. Yeah, this.
I'm not sure if it was mentioned, I just wanna find out if you, um, cover braces for children.
Yes, nineteen, below, below nineteen years old.
Yeah.
And there's maximums and so on, yes.
Okay.
So, and obviously the child is on the plan. Right, right. So we don't cover the adult, just the child. All right. Okay, this is another troublesome area. You submit your claim and we refuse to pay you. And say you have to submit an injury report. Anybody ever had that experience? No, 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 poppy, it's okay. Okay. All right. Um, once on the diagnosis, it says that whatever you went to doctor for is as a result of an injury. What you need to do is to write something to say how that injury occurred. Right? I slipped in my house. Um, I wake up in the morning and feel my neck stiff. Right? If you just go to doctor, submit a claim, we're going to say, well, how that stiffness happened? Because it could have been a vehicular accident. And if you had a, if you had a vehicular accident, you may have had whiplash and the, the vehicle hopefully is insured and there'll be some, there'll be some compensation there for you. Right? Uh, if it's a war injury that occurred at work, you, there, your, your employer may have employer's liability insurance that, um, insurance brokers have already recommended. Right, right, Paul? Right? Um, or it may be eligible for compensation from NIS as well, right? So the injury report is just a letter from you saying what happened. You wake up the morning, you get stiff neck. You don't know why you got stiff neck. You, you say, well, I woke up in the morning and I got stiff neck. All right? That's the report. It sounds fancy, but all we need to know is you just write something to say that this is what happened. Does the form have provision for it? No, I don't think there's enough space on those forms, Joe. No. Our forms are very compact. We don't want to have the long, like it used to be. We used to have some long claim forms long ago. Um, but it doesn't hurt to just write a little script. You might need to use the mic for those persons who are online, because they need to hear you. Yes.
All right, thank you. So for the benefit of everyone, um, if you have a situation where the person was involved in a, a motor accident and that's how they got injured, Sajiko then knows about that, but that's good for you to know. Does it affect the handling of their medical expenses claim for which they have a contract with you?
So the answer to that is yes, it does. And it goes to the general rule that for these type of insurances, you are to be put back to the place you were.
It's called identity.
Prior to the incident.
Sure.
We can't have people getting rich off of health insurance and so on because it would encourage too many people to get sick or to create sickness.
But surely you, when there's a claim coming in, you have people who check claims to make sure that nobody's going to get rich.
So once we have, once we have how you, the person would have been compensated.
Ah, that would take years, months, et cetera.
So what do you suggest, Joe?
I suggest that you pay the claim. And then you have an absolute right of recovery against the, the other party or their insurance company. Subrogation.
Well.
It's a basic principle of insurance.
So in, in your negotiations, you, you remember to bring that up?
Why do we have to? This is, you know, is that the mood of, of the, the, uh, the membership of Geku, for example?
Sorry?
If that's the, if that's what, you know, Geku would, Geku Med would like, why can't we bring it up here?
This is not the place where we negotiate in the terms of the contract. Joe?
I perhaps disagree.
Okay, all right.
Sorry. I would like to re-echo and embrace the point which was raised. And I am proposing that the question be asked to get the sentiment of this meeting concerning this question. This should be asked, we are here present.
There are many cases where due to the, the length of time that say a vehicle might think that we proceed to pay and we go through the insurance after. Okay? But first, we have to have some sort of, something from the insurance letting us know that they are processing the claim and, you know, so we are not that, if it's a life-threatening thing, we are not gonna hold back somebody for a life-threatening situation and not settle the claim. And we'll deal with it after with the other insurance company, general or through national insurance, depends on the, the nature of the, the, um, accident or injury. Okay? It's, you deal with these things on a case-by-case because many time person will already gone to the national insurance, get money, and if we did not ask the question, basically sometimes they're reimbursed twice. So we have to as well, we will do our, you know, checks, but definitely we have to know, we have received letters from national insurance, this is how much they pay or they're not going to pay because maybe the claim came in late. We will deal with, you know, on a case-by-case basis. Okay?
All the Geku members are all honest, right? So none of you want to get rich twice, do you? Right? So that, that's agreed. So the reality is that all the members want is what they're entitled, which is you have a contract. If you have a claim against, um, another person and his insurance and so on, you have no contract with them, you have to fight a legal battle and they will be fighting hard to prove that they're not going to pay. So you have no idea how long it's gonna take, but you do have a contract for your medical insurance.
Yes.
So there should be no reason why you can't pay and then you have the right of recovery against the other side.
Right. So as, as you all have heard, the due diligence would be done to ensure that the payment was not made already. All right? Um, because it has been our experience. Okay? But once we are, once we have the necessary documentation that whatever is ongoing, we wouldn't hold it up. We just want to make sure that the person is not being compensated twice. All right? Yeah, well, it's part of the contract, yes. So she was just saying that the, the broker's stressing of the contract. All that I've just said is actually in the contract. It's part of the terms of the contract, which is why I said negotiate it from a contractual basis. However, we are not inhumane. All right? We are not inhumane and we're not trying to get out of claims. We just want to make sure we do right by you and you do right by us. All right? Okay. Okay, we done that already, we done deductibles already. Under your group life, each member is covered on the life part of it for twenty thousand. This is not related to your Geku debt benefit. So every member of Geku Med under the age of sixty-five, all right, if death occurs, twenty thousand will be paid. If the death is accidental, then it is doubled. All right, so additional twenty is paid. The other part of the D, so the AD and D, the other D is for dismemberment, which I'll give you a list just now. Now, when you reach sixty-five, your life coverage reduces to fifty percent, so it goes to ten thousand until it's seventy. Seventy is the cutoff for the life part of the co, the plan. No, we don't want you to die at all. We, we don't want you to die at all, at all. All right, so again, if everybody shouting, I really don't know what you're saying, though. You're looking good, man. Yes, well. I see some hands, so the person, the mic?
Porter, um, under the performance slide previously, um, for the medical, I think this one was shown as zero ratio, am I correct?
Oh, the last ratio, yes, zero.
Why is that so?
Nobody dead and claimed.
And people doesn't, people don't know.
I don't know. Geku is, Geku, you, well, the Geku. Somebody had their hands up in the back there, I guess, addressing this.
Yes, people do know when they submit, when they come into us, we do inform them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that there is that debt.
That, that part of it.
And we give them the form to complete.
Okay.
All right?
Remember that is for a specific period, eh? Remember that's for a period. Right? We have, we have had death claims, just not in that period.
What period is that?
If I could find that slide, let me see. What? That's what I wanted to say there.
Uh, correction there, Gilbert, that is supposed to be, go, go back to the slide. Right. Um, that one is twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Right, and the one below.
Why is it moving?
Is twenty-two to twenty-three.
This is supposed to be three.
No, no one reported any death during that period. There was none.
All right.
All right.
Yes, yes, Joe.
Gilbert, thank you. Um, looking around the room, some of us are mature, is that right? Um, can you give a, an insurance answer to why the death benefit has to reduce? Can you give an insurance answer to why the death benefit has to reduce at those ages? Because if we go down to mills down this road, we believe that old people cost the same to bury as young people, alright? So, what's the rationale for it being cut down?
Well, again, it's, for whatever reason, I think we are standard in these plans. Again, you can negotiate with us to have that changed, alright? There's nothing that say cannot change. You can negotiate with us to have it changed.
Very good. Thank you.
Alright, yes. I think we go and pass there. Alright, so accidental death, if the death is... Or how to access the debt benefit? So, if a member dies, somebody is on the plan, of course. Usually, what happens with GECU is that you go to GECU and report that the member has passed, because there are other things that has to be done. So, a part, I would want to believe, a part of the process would be the GECU, if the person is in GECU Med, that they would also do that part as well. Cecile? Joe, let me see Cici for a little bit. If a member dies who is on GECU Med, when they come in to do the other stuff with GECU, wouldn't they also do the GECU Med part?
Yes.
That's what I think happens.
We, we normally do that, okay? If the person is over the age of seventy, then we don't have a need to do it.
Well, yes, because there's no coverage at this time.
Once it's under sixty-five or between sixty-five and seventy, they are given all the necessary information and being guided as to how the process is done.
Okay. Alright, so maybe, maybe we have to find a way to, for this to become more open to the members, because I'm hearing people saying that people don't know. I don't, right? So, maybe we have to find a way of making it, the information available to the members more, alright? I didn't mention the dismemberment part. So, only dismemberment, sight in both eyes, twenty thousand dollars is paid, or ten, or ten thousand, you understand, twenty or ten, right? Twenty for those who are below sixty-five, ten for those between sixty-five and seventy. Accidental dismemberment. All these are accidental, alright? Both eyes, both hands, both feet, one hand and one foot, one hand and the sight in one eye, one foot and the sight in one eye, all of that would attract the entire benefit, alright? Loss of sight in one eye only, half of the benefit is paid, or one hand or one foot. And then if you lose a thumb and a finger on the same hand, twenty-five percent of the benefit is paid.
Gilbert, when you said loss of sight in one eye, that leads exactly to what I was thinking there, because you still have the eye, but you can't see from it.
Sight, yes.
Therefore, does loss of limb include loss of use of the limb, permanent use, that is? For example, you still, you still have your arm, but it can't do anything, okay, or your hand?
Where we, is after the wrist, the limb. No, I know. It's after the wrist, right? Right. So, the loss of the limb for us usually mean anything after the wrist.
You mean amputation?
Yes, accidental.
But you've still got your hand.
Not diabetic, and so accidental.
But you've still got your hand, but it's been permanently paralyzed or something.
Yeah, once it's cut off, again, once your wrist, your hand has been dismembered, cut off, removed accidentally, this benefit kick, oh, sorry.
So, therefore, it doesn't pay for an accident that leaves you with loss of use of a limb?
No, it's dismemberment. Yeah.
So, is, so you might as well have it cut off and get the money, right? You're encouraging people to make claims.
I wouldn't say that. I will not say that. That will not be my, my to say. Alright, as to your beneficiaries, it's best to ensure that there is a beneficiary listed, alright? If you can put anyone as a beneficiary, if you put someone who is under the age of majority, who is below eighteen, then you know that we will not be able to contract with that person until they reach eighteen years old, unless there's a court order, alright? So, unless the court says, well, you all have to pay this person, then we wouldn't pay until that person is eighteen. One question I got already is, what happens if the beneficiary died before the insured? If the beneficiary dies and you did not change that person's name from your plan, the money will go to your estate. The money will go to your estate. On, in the, in the state of St. Vincent and Grenadines, your next of kin are the ones who become beneficiaries of your estate. That's providing that you did not leave instructions in the form of a will, alright? Your spouse and children is usually first order of business when it comes to your next of kin. Children does not just mean children from marriage. It doesn't even mean children from the two persons who are together at the same time, as long as a child belong to you. And that both certificates says that you are the mother or father of that child, that child is eligible like all the other children, alright? If you have no children or spouse, then your, and your parents are alive, your parents become your next of kin. If your parents are not alive, your siblings become your next of kin. If you have no siblings, your closest relative. So, your aunts and uncles, and then you go down first cousin, second cousin, third cousin, twenty cousin, whoever is alive, alright? But it means though, that if you know you put somebody on as a beneficiary and they're no longer alive, please change it. Go in and change it. And you can put more than one beneficiary, by the way. We split the money up, alright? So, don't just leave the thing, change it, okay? But if you don't, the law provides as to what happens.
So, can you, as the insured, appoint a trustee for children under the age of eighteen?
Yes, you can. You can appoint someone whom you trust, who you believe will have your child's best interest at heart. Just remember, money is turn people stupid. So, make sure that the person that you choose, you are confident that they would do everything in the interest of your child, alright? But yes, you can appoint a trustee. Excuse me. In terms of the life, the premiums, nine dollars and twenty cents a month, to cover all the life part, alright? Nine dollars and twenty cents per month. Any other questions? Oh, sorry, I did, I was giving a script with a fine printer, so. Okay. Survivor, survivor spousal benefit. Your plan also have, if the member died, if the member died, and the spouse meets, you and the spouse meets these particular eligibility areas, then the coverage will continue for the spouse. One, the member must have been a member for minimum of ten years prior to death. Two, coverage will be limited to the spouse and dependent children only. No new dependent will be added. Coverage will terminate in the event that the spouse remarries, which is constant with survival, survival ship stuff. Coverage will be subject to all current plan limitations and exclusions, so you have to meet all the, all the things that I talked about. They also would have to, to go with those. The spouse will have to continue to pay the premiums, right? Spouses of regular and retired employees will, will be eligible. Deathbed marriages are excluded. Better explain that one. Member is about to die, they apply for the license, public governor's general's license, you can get it on Monday. The marriage officer goes to the hospital or at home where they're dying, and the ceremony is performed, they're married, and member dies. Do we have a time limit? Do we have a time limit on the deathbed in terms of how long they're married for? It didn't say. It says not, it is excluded, I'm asking. The person get married, how long they live before they die? I'd have to confirm how long. But the idea is that you horribly get married because the person is going to die, alright? They die very shortly after. Yes. Well, they would have been on for ten years, yes, alright? So, deathbed marriages are excluded. Coverage will terminate if the dependent spouse attains insurance coverage otherwise. So, if the spouse gets health insurance coverage somewhere else, then this one closes, so. Yeah, but on the survivorship benefit, it's not allowed. Again, that's something you can negotiate, okay?
Very good. Thank you.
Alright. Any other questions? Alright. Someone have a question over here? Any online sir? Okay.
Another question, a statement.
A statement, okay.
My grandmother lived to a hundred and four. She had a sister who lived to a hundred and five, another who lived to a hundred and one. She had a brother who lived to a hundred and two, okay? You see that's seventy? It's problematic. Anything else? Thank you.
Alright, sir. So, we're still covering medically, alright? And by the way, every life insurance policy you have, including those whole life policies, if you live to a hundred, they pay you the benefit, and that's it, alright? So, the policies that we sell, none of them go over a hundred years old. But if you have a whole life policy and you live to a hundred, we will pay you the, the, some insured. I wouldn't call it debt benefit. We'll pay you some insured. I know you're tired of hearing my voice. Thank you so much, alright? Oh, you want to say something?
Handouts for the slides that you did, because I can't remember how far we, we said. So, the next time you have some handout, so I could...
So, everything that I've said here and on these slides, I believe that they'll be made available to you, alright? Yeah, because that's what we did with the other one anyways. So, what we would do, we send them to the brokers, and they could make them available to you, alright? So, don't worry, you could get them.
My question is, what happened after seventy?
What happened after seventy? You no longer pay for the life part of the coverage, but you're still on the health part of the coverage. You still have health insurance, alright? Yes, after seventy, you still have health insurance. So, the health part, the life part is what cuts at seventy, alright?
So, Mr. Porter, so the premiums are increasing, the deductibles increasing, and the benefits decreasing, right? In terms of...
Which benefits?
The, the co-insurance.
Oh, the co-insurance? Oh, yes, ah-huh.
So, I'm just wondering, what is the benefit of staying in the plan? Because it just seems as though...
Let me tell you the benefit of staying in the plan.
The SAGCO is benefiting while members aren't.
That's your interpretation? Wow. Alright, that sounds more like something that is ingrained inside. I'll tell you why. As a question first, God forbid, someone is diagnosed with renal failure, who requires four thousand dollars approximately every month in order to live. Would that person, would that person be better off on this plan or not at all? That's the benefit. That's why I'm saying to you, these plans were not designed for the little headaches and the little cold and so on, and they go to the doctor. They were designed for when things get serious, because that's when we really need money, alright? That's when you really need health insurance. I have worked in, and this is a little other side now, I have worked in insurance all my life, really. But I spent a considerable, considerable amount of years in loans, and I have seen the benefit of someone having insurance coverage and not having it. I have seen families suffer. I've had to sit down with widows and tell them, you have to find somewhere to go and live, because they can't afford to pay the mortgage, because the man was too mannish to have life insurance, and he's gone, alright? And I have seen where the man had, and the widow could grieve properly and not have to worry, how am I going to make it? How am I going to pay this loan? How am I going to feed these children and so on, because the man, I'm saying man because man is dead first. The man, well, except, no, statistically, that is true, eh? No, no, I'm serious, I know. I said it jokingly, but it's actually a fact. Statistically, women have a longer, in St. Vincent, women have a longer lifespan, alright? We're not going to get into the reasons for these now.
But have you considered that you might be pushing members out of the plan who can't afford?
We don't want...
Because while, while SAGCO would look at the performance of the plan and increase or decrease the rate, you also have to look, did GECU look at their members' affordability and negotiate to keep the plan at the current level, maybe dropping off a few benefits rather than increasing the rate? It just appears that GECU members didn't have any say in the increase.
Well, it is, the credit union system, credit union movement is that there's a group of persons who represents the membership on certain matters. It is not practical for the members to negotiate these things. I'm pretty sure I heard Mr. Sheridan saying that when he did give his, his short speech, that there were tons of discussions between insurance brokers who are representing you, GECU staff, and us, right? There was a lot of back and forth and so on, until they've come to an agreement. So, this thing was not done really dearly, alright? And we want to make sure that this plan remains. That's why we put those things in place. Because if we don't put them in place, the plan would collapse. The plan will collapse. And it has only been with us for three years, eh? The plan will collapse. So, we are trying, SAGCO, the insurance brokers, and the staff of GECU, trying to make sure that you have this benefit still, alright? Again, if things improve over a period of time, we will consider, I'm pretty sure, whether Mr. Sheridan or Paul is going to come and say, well, this plan has been performing whatever, whatever, ever, time for us to look at doing some stuff.
You sure about me, Bill?
Alright, so I appreciate you very much. Thank you for being here. Thank you for bearing with me and for being a really good audience. God bless you. I'm turning back over to Paul, I believe.
We'll turn it back over to Geku.
Passing it around like a hot potato, okay. Thank you very much, um, Brother Porter. He is a Geku member, he is. And his son is a Geku, former Geku scholar. And I want to thank everyone for, um, attending this meeting, whether in person or virtually. I'm just going to make a plug to find out if anybody online has asked anything, so no. I would also like to recognize at this time the presence of our president, Mr. Brother Michael Sers. Thank you, Mr. Sers, for attending. And this is where we conclude this evening's proceedings. We want to thank Mr. Tucker and the team from the insurance brokers and the team from Sajiko. Thank you for, for your, for your, um, for... I want to thank the members for feeling the question and for, um, for you to facilitate the answers. And for those online, if you have any questions that you feel were not answered properly, or you, you may have missed it, I know that a question was asked about the recording, and we will try our best to facilitate it with ITFX. I want to thank you for attending virtually. There are some refreshments that are available across the hall, and I will now officially call this meeting to an end and thank everyone for attending. Thank you very much. And I was told that Sajiko has some goodies for the persons in attendance here. So I'm sorry for the persons online. We will, we will send you a picture. But thank you very much, everyone.